Good morning and welcome to the afternoon session of Planning Development Control. It's two o'clock on Thursday, the 21st of January 2021. And I'm just going to ask Dave Shaw, our Senior Democratic Services Officer, to do a roll call of members to check that we're all back from our lunch break. Over to you, Dave.
Yes, thank you, councillor Evans. Councillor Clea.
Present.
Thank you, councillor Evans.
I'm here.
Councillor Jordan Smith.
Yes, I am here.
Thank you, councillor Leiming.
Present.
Councillor McLean.
Present.
Councillor Reed.
Present.
Thank you, councillor Raffel.
Present.
Councillor Rutta.
Present.
Thank you. And Chair, I will move on to the officers that are present this afternoon. Julie Penn, Service Lead for the Built Environment. Fiona Sutherland, the Public Law Manager. And the case officers for this afternoon are for item 11, Cold Harbour Close, Marge Ballinger. And for item 12, Churchfields, Sarah Toes. And for item 13, Manor House, Ivan Gerdler. I'm David Shaw from Democratic Services and I'm joined this afternoon by Matthew Watson and also Nancy Graham from Democratic Services. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Could I just remind members of the public to turn off their microphones? Dog barking in the background. Anyway, not too sure where that is. Not mine today. So if they could turn off their microphones and mobile phones really, or put them on silent. It hasn't been possible today to get the clock on the screen for various technical problems. And so Dave Shaw, the Democratic Services Officer, will remind you when your three minutes is up. And it is possible that members of the committee might like to ask you a few additional clarification questions. I'd like to remind members of the public that this meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. A video recorder recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel shortly after the meeting, where it can be found next to the meeting's details and where the recording will remain. So we will move then to agenda item 11, which is 16 Cold Harbour Close. The case officer is Marge Ballinger. Before I ask Marge to do her presentation, and only for clarification, I've already declared a personal but not prejudicial interest. This is just around the corner from where I live, that's not the interest. But one of the neighbours, Mr Farah, who I see is speaking in objections this afternoon, although I didn't know that at the time, invited councillor Clea and I to view the possible extension from their garden. Councillor Clea and I duly accepted that invitation. We went round separately, wearing our masks, keeping a social distance. And Mr and Mrs Farah were not there, they'd just left the gate unlocked. And so we went into the back garden and viewed the property. But obviously, we didn't discuss it between ourselves, councillor Clea and I. And we saw nobody else, just for clarification. So Marge, over to you.
Thank you, Chair.
Perhaps I would say this is reference 20/02156/HOU. 16 Cold Harbour Close, first floor rear extension. And we seem to be having a few technical problems with Marge on our screen. Currently looking like a Monty Python. There you are. So I think we're ready, aren't we?
Okay. It's just the driving one, right? Thank you, Chair. So yes, I just wanted to point out with 16 Cold Harbour Close Wickham, we have received amended drawings for the east elevation and window details to show the restrictions and obscure glazing of that window. This is the obvious Google Maps of the site. It is just north west of the village and outside the conservation area. And it falls along the edge of the settlement boundary here in Wickham. Here is a closer up view of the site. The Cold Harbour Close has a limited number of buildings, I'm sorry, I didn't jot that down. But what's important here is the the location of the neighbouring dwellings near the site. Number 15 to the west, number 17 to the east and number 18. The proposal is approximately nine metres from the boundary to number 15 and approximately 4.4 metres to the eastern boundary. And these are two photos of the existing elevation, both front and rear. I just wanted to point out that the rear elevation, the ground level slope as you go away from the dwelling, and there's a lower terrace area. And I'm standing back in the garden, looking down toward the dwelling. So just to show that the ground level changes. And this is the rear elevation of the existing and the proposed. The proposal is to be built over an existing rear extension. And the rear facing windows are to be clear glass and to match the existing windows. Materials will match the existing dwelling with brick to lower and hanging tile to the the upper floors. The roof line will be hipped and clipped. And this demonstrates the east elevation, showing the existing ground floor extension and the proposed. The proposed will be similar east height as the existing part of the building at five metres. And the overall roof will pitch to a ridge height of eight metres. These are the two side facing windows that have been altered to be obscure glazed and top openly opening only. And this is the west elevation view. Again, the same dimensions apply, five metres at eaves, eight metres at ridge. The roof will be hipped and clipped. And this window will be clear glazing. And you'll see more on that with photos that I supply. Here are the existing first floor plans and with the proposed. The proposal will be a study of an existing bedroom suite with the same dimensions, 6.2 metres by 6.2 metres. Additional site visits were held just to assess the impact from neighbouring dwellings. This is, these are photos taken from, the one on the left is from the rear lounge of numbers 17 to the east. And this, I don't have a photo of the rear elevation, but there's the patio that extends the full width of the number 17 dwelling. And I'm standing in approximately this corner, looking out toward the proposed site where the build is. You can see there's an existing tree line toward the back with the ground level changes. And these are further photos from the back, the rear garden of number 17. This is taken from approximately this corner out toward the existing dwelling and the roadside. And this photo was taken, taken from closer to the building site, looking toward the road. Just trying to think if there's anything else I need to point out here. No, just, that's just the view of the existing site. I also went to the rear garden of number 18 to take a few photos. This is taken from the back patio closest to what I would consider to the proposal site. The extension will be above, the ground floor extension is approximately here where my arrow is. And the first floor extension will be above it, but not quite to ridge height. The photo on the right was taken from the first floor of number 16, looking back out to number 18. And here, just wanted to point out that the first floor extension below, so obviously this isn't the true representation of the view, but it does demonstrate some of the screening that's to the property. And this is the view from the rear patio of number 16 back toward number 15. The, the position of the dwellings are staggered and there's no side facing windows to number 15. When I was there for the pre-app visit in July, there, there was a lot of screening. So on my January visit, I wanted to make sure to capture the, the true impact versus from a previous impact, just to show the amount of screening. These are two views from the public area. This is more of a western view through the rear garden of the property, where the proposal would not be seen. And the photo on the right is more of a further back position beyond this intersection that will look through to the, the tree line in the rear. But the proposal expects to be set back from the side elevation and follow the path of the existing roof. So there might be some slight visibility in this area. And to conclude, the proposal does not have a significant or detrimental impact on the character and appearance of the area or residential amenities, and therefore is in accordance with policies of the development plan.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, thank you very much, Marge. Now we move towards the public speakers. We have three public speakers. And the, we have two objectors, John Farah and Andrew Hudson. Good afternoon, Mr Farah, and good afternoon, Mr Hudson.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
John Farah.
Yes, I can't see you, but no doubt, oh, would you like, yes, great. And then that's Mr Farah, is it? And then Mr Hudson, are you here? Great, yes. So you will share the three minutes, set aside for the objectors. I don't mind who goes first or who goes second, and nor how much time each of you use. But you have to share the three minutes. And after the three minutes, I'm very sorry, I will have to stop you. So the person who goes first needs to keep an eye on the time so that the other person perhaps gets a fair crack at the whip. So who's going to start?
John Farah will start if you don't mind. I'll, I'll speak for about two and a half minutes and Andrew Hudson wants to then finish, if that's all right with you.
Yeah, that's up to you entirely, up to you both.
Okay, I'll start then.
So when you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you. The rear of our house, as you can see from those photos, at number 17 faces south west towards the side wall of number 16, close to the boundary. The proposal is excessively large and high and will appear from our property that another house has been added to the rear of number 16. It would have an overbearing impact, be dominating and feel intrusive to us. The very high roof ridge is parallel to our boundary. But why is the end half hipped? It not hipped, as the planning officer said, it's half hipped. This makes the ridge unnecessarily longer than if it was fully hipped from the gutter line in the same way as the existing house roof. The height could be lowered a little to equal the front gable ridge. The 6.2 metres extension is almost two thirds of the length of the original 10 metres sidewall of the house. Therefore, the total increased building area facing us, including the roof, will virtually double. Our main bedroom, living room and recreational patio area are directly opposite and face the extension. Our other living rooms and most bedrooms face the same way. And our garden is only 20 metres long from the house. And it looks longer than that from your own photos or the planning officer's photos because she's used a wider angle lens. Areas of our garden would have shade where there was previously afternoon sun. And we strongly object to the application and respectfully ask that it is declined. Past planning applications in this road were not intrusive or overbearing and there have been no double story rear extensions. Under representations of the report, the parish council objections included height and bulk of the proposal. But this important comment has been omitted from the committee report. Under impact on neighbour amenities, it states that harmful impacts of overshadowing and overbearing are not expected to residential amenities of number 17. This is clearly not the case of the height, bulk and overbearing appearance of the proposal as it stands are real and therefore major concerns for us and others. The planning officer herself even used the word overbearing to us during the site visit to our house and number 18. The application cannot comply with the local planning regulations policy as it does not, as it does have an unacceptable adverse impact on adjoining property. So that's all I have to say. Perhaps Mr Hudson can continue, please.
Yes, as my neighbour at number 17 has said, we have similar issues with this development. There were no complaints about their ground floor extension because it had no effect on us being mostly below the level of the fence. However, this second story extension level with the roof line presents nearly twice the size.
Three minutes, Chair.
Twice the size of our house, twice the view of our bedrooms, kitchen.
Mr Hudson, I'm very sorry.
All right.
If you could both remain because there could be questions for, for you from the committee. Mr Hudson, could I, I start? Where do you live?
Number 18.
Number 18, okay, I know where 18 is, yeah. Any questions for Mr Hudson or Mr Farah?
We have councillor McLean, Chair.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. Mr Hudson, could I, just ask you to complete the sentence that you were about to complete there? I'm sure the Chair will allow me to do that.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I was just saying that it presents nearly twice the size of house to our view from our bedrooms, kitchen, dining room and conservatory.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you just confirm again, your house number was?
Number 18.
Right, okay, thank you.
I have a question, Chair, if I may. I think the applicant would say that, that there's quite a lot of screening, existing screening that will mitigate the, the views from your and other neighbours' houses. Do you, do you not agree that, that that will, you know, screen the, the new build from your, from your view?
Who's the question to?
To you, Mr Hudson.
Yeah, to me. Well, just looking, looking from our upstairs windows and across, you know, it's, we're going to see that all around the edge of the existing tree that sat. So, and, and also for the rest of our garden, the windows that are at the end of the house that are clear actually look over our garden because our garden runs along, you know, a long way. So it's really just lack of privacy in our garden that's going to be affected by the upstairs windows.
I think councillor McLean has another question, Chair, thank you.
Councillor McLean.
Thank you again, Chair, for your room forbearance. Looking at the picture on 127, view from 18 outside rear patio left. Is that a summer house at the bottom of the garden with a tree behind it and another little, is that yours?
Yes, that is, yeah.
So where the extension's going on the back of that, behind that, the large tree?
Yeah.
And also the smaller tree that's to the, visually to the right of that.
Yeah.
Where do you see the, the actual extension, if you like, the end of the roof in relation to the taller of the two trees coming?
It comes out past it to the right.
How far?
And to the left.
How far do you think it will be?
I don't really know because it's difficult to see from that picture where it's going to come to. But I'd say it's, you know, a couple of metres be there.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
The other thing was, was the picture was taken from low down on our patio. So obviously from our rooms and upper rooms, you're going to see it pretty clearly and be able to look in through the windows.
Okay, that, thank you, you answered my question.
Thank you.
Vice Chair, any more questions for Mr Farah or Mr Hudson?
No further questions, Chair, thank you.
So gentlemen, thank you very much indeed for coming along this afternoon. Obviously, you're going to remain in the meeting to hear the debate. But if you could just turn your microphones and your cameras off, that would be great, thank you. Thank you very much. And now we have the applicant, who is Mr Duffy. Good afternoon, Mr Duffy. I've seen you already. Oh, there you are. Good, so when you're ready, you have three minutes.
I will be referring to photos contained in my response to objections, which was published on the planning website. The proposal is for an extension above a ground floor building. It's completely at the rear of our house, not viewable from the road. And the proposal will be for a study of my daughter's bedroom. There were 14 comments on this proposal. The most important one was from the owner of the house closest to the extension, namely number 15, who had no objection to the proposal. Of the other 13, only two would ever be able to see it, it is not directly viewable from the road. The objections were canvas by the owners of number 17 and 18. They had these friends, family and even their gardener to write in. None of those who objected did object to a similar extension in the close, even though that one is visible from the road and even overlooked one of the objections properly with clear windows. The parish council did not object to the other extension, even though it faced the road. With regard to the objections here of number 18, the proposal will be at a considerable distance from their house. It will be subservient to the main house and be partly obscured by mature evergreen trees. Their gardener, a paid employee, is one of the objectives. His job is to maintain those trees. And I refer you to photos taken from our property on page 10, which has got up there, showing the tree cover and how the extension seemed to be obscured. That picture was actually taken from the top of the roof. In regard to the objections from number 17, the occupants have felled five mature evergreen trees. One was immediately adjacent to the proposed extension. This was felled after the planning application was submitted. And I refer you to photos on pages five, six and seven. The extension would obscure the view of house number 15 from house 17. The photo on page six shows the shadow from our house. Thus, the extension is to the west, will not have any effect on the available sunlight. The photo on page seven shows the garden of number 17 before the tree was felled. The further two mature evergreen trees were felled at the front of their property. These trees obscured the view of our house and the proposed extension.
Chair, that's three minutes.
It's ironic to object to the proposal on the count of the lack of privacy and lots of greenery and then to felled mature evergreen trees that provide.
Mr Duffy, thank you, I will have to stop you there, thank you very much. There will be probably questions for you and I'd like to start. You were referring to page numbers and we've got every now and then bits of a document. Is that from the planning portal or where, where this has come from?
Yes, it's from the planning portal, it was a my, my response to objections. And I believe the planning officer is actually, well, I can see the photos, she's bringing them up on, on my screen. So I don't know whether you can see the same pictures or not.
Yeah, well, I have, I have read the, the planning portal, but you were referring to page numbers and I wasn't too sure what pages you were referring to.
Yeah, it's from the document which I believe you call response to objections, published on the planning website.
Okay, yes, you know, I, I have read that, thank you. So Vice Chair, are there any questions for?
Yes, Chair, I have a question for Mr Duffy, if that's okay?
Yes, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr Duffy. Can I just ask, the, the existing screening, I think, is, is quite important for, for neighbour amenity. And could you just tell me, some of it looks quite close to the existing extension and therefore close to what will be the, the new first story extension. Can you tell me how you're planning to get that protected during the construction of the, of the second story? Thank you very much.
It wouldn't be affected, there's enough room alongside the proposed extension. The scaffolding would only be 1.3, 1.4 metres wide. And so consequently, it would, the existing screening would not be affected. There's no grounded, there's no groundwork to be done. It's, it's a simple case of building up from the, the roof.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Could I just ask, could these, these photographs keep moving in front of us? And the Mr Farah's photos that I see, and we've just seen one from 15. But the occupants of number 15 are supporting the application, are they not, Marge?
Yes.
Or Mr Duffy?
Yes, sir.
You can answer, yes. I don't, I don't know why the photos are moving around to things that we're not talking about.
I'm sorry, that was my fault. I was trying to get to a position where you were talking about the boundary. So I was moving to a photo that would represent that. And I can confirm that, that number 15 has supported this application.
Yes, yeah. Which is the, the nearest house, I believe, is it? Yes, yeah, looks like it from the map. Okay, any more questions, Vice Chair?
No further questions, Chair, thank you.
I think what would be useful, given that, you know, these photographs have sort of come at us again. We have got photographs in our pack that we could look at. But Marge, is it possible just for you to re-show? Thank you, thank you, Mr Duffy, with, I think, there's no more questions, but could you just re-show from the objectors' point of view their, their concerns, the photographs that we had, and we have them in our pack, I know. You want to talk us through? So that one I recognise is from 17.
Let's go back to.
That is 17 there.
Yes.
Yeah, and 17, because it doesn't look like it on our map. 17, 17 and 18 are going round the close. So we've got 16 and then it's going round the close towards the main road then. So 17 is the one past the substation.
Yes.
And 18, we heard from the objector in 18, which is the next house above.
Oh, sorry. A little lag with this mouse.
So that is 18 towards 16.
Correct.
Yes, Chair, this is from the garden of number 18.
Yes, Chair, this is from the garden of number eighteen, looking across the rear of their garden, which forms the side boundary of the application site.
No, I know very well, I'm just trying to
Yeah, thank you.
Committee. Okay, thank you very much. And there were no more questions, I don't think, from Mr Duffy, Vice Chair. And so we, Marge, is there anything that you want to pick up on to tell the committee before we go into questions on our?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I would like to clarify that the photos that I took that are in this presentation are from my tablet, so there was no wide angle lens or any sort of alteration. It's just what our normal tablets take pictures of. And there was also a clarification about number eighteen's, the rear, the existing rear extension. I just wanted to point out that it doesn't come to the boundary. Comes just, just inside the boundary.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So well, councillors will go to our report, starting on page one hundred and twelve. If we could do principle of development and design and layout.
We have councillor Reed with a question, Chair.
Councillor Reed.
Sorry. My question is actually on page one, one, two. It refers to the views from number seventeen, which is where I was going to bring it up.
Do you want to see those again?
Well, I've got it in front of me, Chairman, and you may wish to see it because
No, I know the
You know it, right. Well, you'll have noticed that it can't possibly be correct, the arrows.
Do you want to clarify that?
Well, if you look at the applicant's house, number fifteen, you can see virtually the whole of the back wall. The arrow's pointing from the corner of number seventeen.
The applicant is sixteen.
Sixteen, sixteen then, sorry. It's not the one. That's not the plan, the view.
I'm, I'm a little confused here, but Marge, do you want to, do you understand councillor Reed's question here? Do you want to refer us to the page in our report?
I would, if it had any numbers, it hasn't. Don't worry, Chairman.
It has, there are numbers at the top of each page, Mark.
Sorry?
No, it's important to sort out. So are we looking at page one, two, two?
One, two, five. It's printed on a, it's printed on a black background, that's why.
And of course, the ones that I'm looking at haven't got, oh, hasn't got a page.
Actually, I think I've just sussed it out.
Okay, so you're not clearing anything?
No.
Okay, okay. Yeah, some of these, well, not those, but some of the photographs are a little dark to work out. Okay, so any more questions, Vice Chair?
No further questions, Chair, thank you.
So we're still in the middle of our report. Could I ask one, though? We're on the impact of, on the character of the area and impact on neighbouring amenities, page one hundred and twelve, one hundred and thirteen. Marge, I didn't quite understand the bit about, in the twelve paragraph on page one hundred and twelve, the bit about the existing substation, because as far as I could see, the substation didn't obscure anything because it wasn't tall enough.
I'm, I'm sorry, you want me to clarify my report statement?
Yes, on page one hundred and twelve, it said there might be glimpses, that's the first paragraph of impact on the character of the area. And it says there may be glimpses of the proposal viewed through the rear garden of number seventeen, but would not be obvious due to the existing substation. But the substation is further forward, isn't it?
I was referring to if you're standing on the pavement in front of the dwelling, looking back from the longer views, yes, there are glimpses that you can view. But when you stand in front of the dwelling and in front of the side garden where you could potentially see, it is obscured by the substation.
This is the substation here, isn't it? This, we can see the substation in the right hand photograph.
Yes.
That doesn't obscure views of what's going on behind sixteen, to my mind.
I apologise, I was looking at different aspects of the public realm. So standing near to the, where the proposal will be, the substation will obscure it. But the further back you stand on the other side of the courtyard, there might be glimpses.
Well, that's the road, that's Cold Harbour Close. But yeah, I was just puzzled by that statement because I couldn't see that. So we're on impact on the character of the area and impact on neighbouring amenities. Any questions, Vice Chair?
Sorry, technical issue, no, no questions, Chair, thank you.
And thank you very much for battling through the meeting today because you've got your hand in a sling, haven't you? It's a two-handed operation for you.
I've run out, run out of hands, I'm afraid.
Okay, so there will be no questions there. So we'll just go through the rest of it, landscape and trees, highways and parking, and any other matters. No, no questions?
No further questions.
Any debate?
No debate as yet, Chair. No debate, no.
I suppose as it's in my water, I want to say something. I have viewed this and I do understand it's always disturbing when people build next to you and you think it's high, but I can't see any material planning reasons to refuse this. We, councillor Cleare, and I stood in the garden, we didn't discuss it, so I don't know what councillor Cleare thinks, but we stood in the garden of seventeen and fifteen is the nearest one and that hasn't objected. And eighteen is further away and I do understand that they think they might be overlooked or whatever. But there is a substantial tree planting in between them. So I can't see a material planning reason to refuse this. I don't know if anyone else wants to come in on debate?
We have councillor Gordon Smith and councillor Cleare, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Yeah, I, I can't tell any real reason to object to it. It's, it's quite a long way from the garden of number eighteen and seventeen. My only point is, I don't know quite why they, they want to have a half-hit roof when all the other roofs are fully hit. To me, you want to have a roof that matches, the roof on an extension should really tie in with the
And you can't change it now, I'm afraid.
Well, no, it just seems a bit, a bit of an anomaly, but anyway. And I can't see any valid reason to object to it.
Councillor Cleare? Thank you, thank you, councillor Gordon Smith. Councillor Cleare?
Thank you, Chair. As you commented, we, I had a look as well and I know the road well, having lived in Wickham for many years. And I viewed the site, there are all large houses there and some have been added to. But I do feel, I cannot find a material planning reason to refuse this. There is a lot of screening, which I do feel will obscure the extension quite a lot, actually. So Chair, I, no, I think it's fine, I will be voting for it, thank you.
So there being no more debates? We will move
No further debate, Chair, no.
Thank you very much, councillor Rutter. So this, this application has been recommended for approval subject to the conditions on page one hundred and fourteen and one hundred and fifteen, five of them, and informatives on page one hundred and fifteen and one hundred and sixteen. So I will pass the, over to Dave, who will take the committee through whether they approve this application for, to be permitted. Dave, over to you.
Yes, thank you again, Chair. Councillor Cleare?
Four.
Councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Four.
Councillor Laming?
Four.
Councillor McLean?
Four.
Councillor Reed?
Four.
Councillor Raffel?
One.
And councillor Rutter?
Four.
All eight members in favour, Chair?
Thank you. So that application has been recommended for approval, for permission. So we then move on, when the officers are ready, to the next item, which is item twelve. Do we need a moment to get the presentation on screen? Thank you, Marge, for your presentations. And we have public speakers, Ward councillor, one of the Ward councillors, councillor Sue Cook. Yes, I can see she's here, and supporter Rob Pouter. Mr Pouter here?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. So, Mr Pouter, if you could just turn your microphone and your video off because we have a presentation from the officer first of all. Thank you very much, it just reduces the disturbance that we all listen to. And the case officer is Sarah Toes.
We're just getting ready, Chair, one moment please, thank you.
Okay, yes, it takes a while to take one presentation down and put another presentation up just to explain the gap in transmission to those listening. So we'll wait a few moments. And we can see on our update sheet that there has been an appeal decision on this site. And I asked Sarah to put it on the update sheet. It was for something completely different to what is being proposed now. But I thought the committee would be interested in the inspector's comments. So this application is twenty-eight Churchfields, Twyford. It's in the National Park, SDN PD slash twenty slash O one four one six slash four. And we received amended plans on the ninth of November last year. And I can see Sarah, so all righty, Sarah.
Thanks, Chair, good afternoon.
Over to you when you're ready.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So the application site is located within the village of Twyford in the South Downs National Park. And it lies on a road called Churchfields, which is located to the north-west of the main crossroads in the village, which is here. Churchfields runs north from Finch's Lane in a crescent shape up to an oval at the eastern end. So the application site is located on the inside curve of the crescent to the south side of the road, which is indicated by the arrow. There is, Fields lie to the west of the site and opposite there's a footpath known as church path, which leads to the church and the school that lie to the north-east. And the ground levels generally slope down from the north to the south. So the application site itself comprises a semi-detached two-storey property with an internal floor area of approximately eighty-eight square metres and a single detached garage and an outbuilding. A small section of the garden of number twenty-nine to the south is also included within the site to facilitate a widened access. And the rear garden is enclosed by fencing and there are several trees in the garden to the south of the property. So this is the aerial photograph of the site, which you can see by the white arrow. So here's number twenty-eight and the adjoining property number twenty-seven. And then to the south is number twenty-nine Churchfields and with the adjoining property, five, the crescent. So this map has been taken from the draft Twyford neighbourhood plan, which shows that the application site is located within the proposed settlement boundary of the village. You can see by this black arrow, it's just on the edge. So the application seeks to demolish twenty-eight Churchfields, separating it from the adjoining property number twenty-seven and to construct a detached two-storey replacement dwelling. So the proposal's been amended throughout the course of the application as a result of officer concerns about the scale and appearance of the original scheme. So I've included the original and the amended plan so members can clearly see the changes. So the original dwelling had an angled plan form, as you can see here, with a single detached garage to the side. This was considered overdevelopment of the site because the built form was spanning pretty much the entire width of the plot. So it's been amended to a simple linear form now to be more reflective of the adjoining property and others to the east. And the width of the building has been reduced by 1.2 metres and the garage has been removed from the scheme. So this shows the site layout plan in more detail. The access is going to be widened to allow for two off-road parking spaces. And a new side access is proposed for number twenty-seven in between the two buildings. There's bin storage in the rear garden and a shed for cycle storage. And it's proposed to remove the existing trees from within the site and plant replacement trees. So these are the floor plans of the original scheme, which showed, which was originally a four-bedroom property of approximately one hundred and eighty-one square metres, split over three levels with rooms in the loft space and the roof. So it's been changed to a three-bedroom property, which is now one hundred and thirty square metres, split over two levels with the second room and floor in the loft space, the roof space omitted from the scheme. These are the proposed front and side elevations. So the top ones are the, the top two are the original plans and the bottom is how it's been amended. So the front elevation is facing on to Churchfields. The original design, as you can see, has had roof lights and it had glazing in the top of the gable, the front and side gable and a front balcony. So these elements have all been removed in the amended design and windows have also been reduced in size and number. And the materials that they're proposing are clay roof tiles and then brick and timber cladding for the walls with aluminium doors and windows. This is the side elevation, which will be, this will be mostly obscured by the adjoining property number twenty-seven. And then this is the rear elevation, which would be facing towards the south to the neighbouring property number five, the crescent, mostly. So again, the roof lights have been removed and the first floor windows have been reduced in number. And as I mentioned earlier, the width of the property has been reduced by 1.2 metres. And this is the proposed street scene, so what you would see from Churchfields. You can see the original scheme was in line with the number twenty-seven. So they've, they've lowered the roof height slightly to sit below that of the adjacent property. And they've removed the, the garage. And by pulling it in a bit as well, it just gives more space between the development and the neighbouring properties. And the gap between, as you can see here, the gap between number twenty-seven and twenty-eight has been made wider to allow for a new side access for number twenty-seven. And because the proposal involves a separation of the pair of semi-detached properties, it's proposed to reinstate the west elevation of number twenty-seven with brickwork. So this plan provides details of that. Okay, moving on to the photographs, this is taken, this is the application site. You can see twenty-eight Churchfields on the left with the outbuilding and detached garage. It's just a closer view. So this is number five, The Crescent, behind, and the adjoining property is twenty-nine Churchfields. These large trees that you can see are in neighbouring gardens. Just another closer view. And part of this hedge will have to be removed to allow for the widened access. It's a view of the two pairs semis together. And this is looking up Churchfields towards the east, with the neighbouring property to the right. Just another view further up the road. And then this view is taken further down on Churchfields, looking north. So this is twenty-nine Churchfields on the right here, and this is the end elevation of number twenty-eight. That's just moving slightly closer, as you can see the corner. And that says the garage of the number twenty-nine to the right. So this is the application site in here. This is a view between the existing property and the outbuilding, so just looking through to the rear garden. You can see the big tree here is behind in the neighbouring property's garden. And behind these existing trees, this is number five, The Crescent, neighbouring property that's closest to the site. And these are the trees within the garden that will need to be removed. That's just showing you the boundary, that side. And then looking back west, these are the trees to be removed. And this shows the outbuilding and the rear of number twenty-eight. And here's just a rear view of number twenty-eight. And the applicant has provided a couple of photographs taken from the rear first-floor windows. So on the left, you can see the boundary treatment with the existing trees. And then on the right, you can see number five, The Crescent. Thank you. So to summarise, the application is to approve the scheme subject to conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sarah. We have two public speakers. One of the ward councillors, councillor Sue Cook, first of all. Good afternoon, councillor Cook.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon. When you're ready, you've got five minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, fellow councillors and officers and any members of the general public. Thank you for allowing me to speak at this planning application of twenty-eight Churchfields, Twyford. I'd like to first of all like to bring to your attention a question that was raised by a fellow councillor in the ward with regard to the clarification as to whether the policy S D thirty, as explained by the technical advice note, back, as explained, in July twenty twenty, is applicable to the demolition of a three-bedroom house in Twyford settlement boundary, and it's replaced by what was then originally proposed, a four-bedroom home. Bedrooms defined by the technical advice notes is, am I right in saying, certain other rooms, such as a study, which this application does have in it, on its first floor, on its ground floor, if they can accommodate a bed, which it could. Lucy Howard then has replied, and that an email was forwarded to Sarah Toes and to Julie Pinnock, and I believe that's also been forwarded on to yourselves. The South Downs National Park adopted Twyford's old and never updated the settlement boundary, and the Winchester City Plan was erased, and therefore we are without a settlement boundary until the neighbourhood plan is adopted, which we've seen this morning on the slide. The existing house that we are discussing is within what an ordinary person would consider to be a built-up area of the village. The scale of the proposed development must respond positively to the environment and character of the local environment. If we go back a couple of years ago, there was an application, as we've all been reminded, and thank you, Chair, for allowing the appeals notification to be given to all councillors and the committee. I would agree that the roof height has been lowered, and some of the bulk of it. But the proposed development is contrary to policy due to its size, is it not? Does it not, does it fit with the style of Churchfield? It's excessive, it's cramped, and it is quite ostentatious, and certainly not fitting with the current Churchfield street scene. Other houses are widely spaced, and especially further round the green. It has an unacceptable impact just on, not just on Churchfield's residents, but behind in the avenue and residence of The Crescent. It's overdeveloping a small plot, excessive density, and certainly overcrowding an area which is already busy. Does it not set a precedence where you can own a property, knock it down and build a much larger property, and then leave you with no garden? It's not about just because a resident owns a piece of land and they can build what they like. This is not the way forward. But the proposed development will have no garden. And despite the highway report reporting that two of the off-road spaces are then available, I'm constantly being called by residents saying that there's many cars parked there, which we've seen from the photographs, and this is going to only add to it because of the amount of rooms that are proposed here. The applicant now lives in number thirty. This used to be a modest three-bedroom house with a garden. The applicant gave up the garden to build a second three-bedroom house, which we've heard. So this effect, it doesn't just have on Churchfields, as we've heard, it affects people and five other residents in The Crescent. The applicant then extended twenty-nine, and now we have twenty-nine and thirty effectively gardenless. So twenty-eight was purchased and negotiations took place. The elderly gent in twenty-seven initially objected to it, and obviously now has supported the application. Following the plans began infilling gardens of twenty-eight. The outlook from three sides of this proposed house could obscure the bricks and windows of its neighbours. The western garden of the property overlooks the valley, is currently bathed in an orange beautiful light in the evening, which is reflected on the properties in The Crescent. That would be no more. The proposed development would, its construction of a detached dwelling is irregular, on an irregular tapering plot, which we would be positioned uncharacteristically to the surrounding properties. It would have an adverse effect on the character, and as I said already, and the appearance of the area, surely it would conflict with policies of Winchester local plan. The path that is opposite, known as Church Path, is a path that goes to the church. It's regularly used by the schoolchildren. So having a property with more bedrooms and more cars would create a problem, and it's an aggress on the public footpath. This development would move twenty-eight Churchfields out of an affordable property category, which was the original purpose of building this estate. Perhaps they'd like to build a bungalow, maybe two or three bedrooms, but we can't tell them that. In general, from building in the original garden of number six, which also caused controversial situation, now plans for this proposed development, despite the minor changes that we've heard, put forward.
That's five minutes, Chair.
So in short, if the committee hasn't already had a chance to read the inspector's report, then please do so. It's overbearing, it's excessive, it's cramped, and it's unacceptable. And what I would ask of you, committee, please, you've read the report, I would ask you to reject this, and please ask them. Nobody's saying you can't build there, but just be honest with your residents. Thank you.
Five minutes is well over. Thank you, councillor Cook.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm sorry, but we have to be strict about time.
Yes, of course.
Be fair to you.
Am I allowed to give an apology from a neighbour? Is that possible, or is that not allowed?
An apology.
An apology from Dr Catherine Elliott, who lives at number five, The Crescent. She dearly would have loved to have spoken today.
Oh, okay.
She was not able to because she is a doctor, and her husband is an ethologist, and they've both been on night duty. So they apologise. But thank you for allowing me to do that, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you for your contribution, councillor Cook. If you could turn your camera off now as well, that would be great. And then we have one last speaker, the supporter, Rob Powder. We've already said good afternoon to each other. Mr Powder?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can see you and hear you.
Good.
When you're ready, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, my name's Rob Powder, and I'm the applicant, and I have twenty-nine Churchfields, which are adjacent to this site. My team have been working diligently with the planning officers for over two years, through their earlier refusal of an appeal for an additional building to the Rexham site. We've consulted all along the way with pre-apps etcetera, to come to a workable solution which addresses the requirements for all concerned. I have to say, the planning officers have been extremely helpful and professional throughout the process in our efforts to come up with a workable solution. Designs you have before you for the demolition and rebuild are in themselves a negotiated solution, which has been pared back considerably from the original plans after the officers' discussions, which you've heard about, and I won't go on about that. The current building is obsolete, certainly from a length ability to raise a mortgage point of view. The deteriorating reinforced concrete frame construction here is known to have a reasonably short, finite life, which cannot easily be inspected for stability. A pragmatic solution is thus required. The option to replace all the external walls in concrete fame is however possible, and is one solution. This option has been undertaken by others on the site, on this side of Churchfields Greens, which are all the same construction. This involves a substantial rebuild and jacking up the whole building, with all external walls needing to be demolished. This option does not, I believe, need any planning consent. Where this solution has been employed on the estate, the result has been varied in respect of design style, with in all cases thus far, a builder's solution being opted for, without any architectural style being achieved as a result, in my view. Somehow, somehow simply replacing concrete horizontal panelling with brickwork simply does not really aesthetically work. I guess due to the loss of the strong horizontal emphasis with the concrete panelling, which the concrete panelling achieves, and which replacing with brickwork does not with the existing fenestration. The decision to replace the existing structure has, of course, given us the opportunity to create two detached houses and introduce some architectural styling, and for modern standards of efficiency, insulation, and immediate achievement. And to assist in the drive towards reducing carbon footprint, etcetera. The plot size is certainly large enough to, by current standards, to accommodate a larger derling than the existing. And it certainly has a, the same size garden as existing at the moment, which is larger than many of the others on Churchfields, in my view. Not in my view, in fact. We believe that the corner is an important gateway into the heart of Churchfield's estate, and the building is, as proved, is, we believe, sympathetic to its prominence, with lower floor levels in comparison to the existing, in order to better accommodate the weight of the land drops away.
Mr Powder, thank you very much. Thank you. Councillor Cook, would you like just to come back a minute? Because I, I'm so sorry, I forgot to ask if there are any questions for you. I'm so sorry. And so were there any questions for councillor Cook? No. An unfortunate error, but.
I don't think so, Chair. I think we've got two questions for Mr Powder, but not for.
Thank you, councillor Cook. I'm so sorry to keep making you come back and think. We've got questions for Mr Powder, Vice-Chair.
Yes, we have councillor Reed and councillor McLean. Thank you.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. I just hope councillor McLean's is not the fifty questions that he seems to have indicated. Mr Powder, the concrete structure of the current building, if you remove half of it, because it currently is semi-detached, will this have any detrimental effect on the remaining side?
My architects advised me that this has been done many times before. And whilst we are going to have to come up with a solution when we delve into the building, we have, we have, we are planning, we're planning, we are going to rebuild a strong structural wall to replace the end wall, which is being removed, and accommodate, and make sure that the building is structurally solid. That is, that is the intention. And the exact solution is not, we can't design until we delve into the building further.
Thank you.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, councillor Reed, my finger got stuck. It's only the one question. Mr Powder, you, sorry?
You may ask as many questions as you like.
Bless you, Chair. Mr Powder, you've just explained that the building you're planning on doing the work on is effectively, I think you used the word structurally unsound, in that the concrete and metal framework had gone past itself by date. But does that not equally apply to the other building that you're planning on retaining?
I said it was, it was obsolete from a lending point of view. And one must draw on one's own conclusions whether that means the whole building is obsolete. You can't get a mortgage on these buildings because the metal frame is reinforced, and you don't know how the metal bars within the concrete structure, whether they're about to, whether they're deteriorating, rusting, and are going to blow the concrete off and reduce stability.
Sorry, I was in there, because I think, I'm sure I heard you say that the structure you're planning on developing, that had already happened to. I could be wrong, but maybe I could be right on that. If that's the case, the other one must be the same.
I don't think I said that. I said it was, I think I said it was obsolete from a lending and mortgage point of view.
Okay.
But to answer the second part of your question, yes, we have, we have no, we have no influence on the adjacent property. We will make it as structurally sound as we are able. I believe, in fact, that the adjacent owner is planning to do the work which others have done in replacing the concrete with brickwork, which will certainly provide a solution to that. But we have no influence whether he does that or not.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Raffel has a question, Chair.
Councillor Raffel?
Thank you, Chair. This is on the same lines as building. Having just gone through a massive alteration in my house, what steps have you taken to stop the dust in number seventeen? We've had two months of dust in our house. I tell you what, that's not good.
Number seven Church, number seventeen Churchfields.
Well, you're going to change the wall down.
Oh, in number twenty-seven, you mean?
Sorry, twenty-seven, yeah.
Yeah. Well, number twenty-seven is behind the idea. We have worked with Mr Button, who is the owner there, in devising a plan so that, so that he gets the building that he wants in the end. And I have no doubt that we'll be able to work with him in reducing the dust and making his building habitable whilst this work is done.
I thought that with builders in my house, it's just not possible. So you've got to double ensure that number seventeen, sorry, twenty-seven doesn't suffer from your extensions.
We will do, we will do that. As I say, we have, the owner of twenty-seven is behind our ideas, and I have no doubt that we're going to be able to make it right. I am an owner of property two doors along the road. And I assure you that we'll be, we'll be going the extra mile, because these are my neighbours with whom I have to live going forward.
Thank you. I'm insured with that.
Councillor McLean has another question, Chair. Is that okay?
Councillor McLean?
Thank you. Just a further question. When you produce the new building and you also replace the wall on the old building, will the foundations be brought up to modern standards on the old building? And obviously, the new one will have to be, but the old one, will the foundations be brought up to modern standards?
We will be complying with all building regulations. And if the building regulations require us to do that, then that's what we will do. As I've already said, it is the plan at the present moment in time for the adjacent owner to to replace his outside walls with brickwork ones, which will require foundations. So in all likelihood, that will happen. But as in all development situations, it's a bit of a roving grief until you open up or you dig up your foundations to know what you're working with.
Okay, councillor McLean?
Thank you.
On the same vein, because I think this is a slightly unusual application for us, and we don't normally get splitting a semi-detached house, although I know it has been done, and you say you have knowledge of it being done. Whose responsibility is it, then, to make good the number twenty-seven? The wall next to twenty-seven? Whose responsibility is it then to make good the number 27, the wall next to 27, the sort of semi-detached wall?
Our contract with Mr Button, who owns 27, will be for us to undertake all of those works to rebuild the end wall. We're not undertaking to build his other outside walls, but we will undertake to rebuild the end wall and enter into a contract with him to do that. And he wouldn't allow us to take the end wall down without us entering into that contract.
And I understand that the owner of number 27 is perhaps considering other proposals. But if it just stays as it is, as a sort of, you know, a brick wall or a wall with facing on, you're not going to see too much of it from the photographs?
No, because I think there's a metre and a half, the planning officer will be able to confirm, but I believe it's a metre and a half gap, enough to walk down for the two properties to have a pathway down. But from any angle, you're not going to be seeing either side wall very much.
I can visualise that because I've got a metre between myself and my neighbour. So, you know, that's enough to thing the bin in and out and whatever. Okay, thank you. Vice Chair, do we have any more questions for...?
We have councillor Laming with a question.
Councillor Laming?
Thank you, Chair. It's always an unknown quantity when you do this type of work. What happens if you find that next door neighbour's house becomes structurally unsound because you've removed your half of the house as such? Are you fully indemnified for that?
Are we fully indemnified for it? No, is the answer. We haven't got a policy in place. Yeah, I mean, we can look at doing it. It will clearly be our responsibility to make sure that it is structurally sound.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any more questions for Mr Powder?
No further questions, Chair, thank you.
So thank you very much, Mr Powder, as you say with us, but if you could turn your microphone and your camera off. I could just, could I just warn the committee about my potential connection in that we've got open reach coming around at four o'clock and I hope they're not going to cut me off. We've had to have a new hub and then, oh, I can't tell you the problems we've had. So they might come between four and six or they might not turn up at all, which is also par for the course and the vice chair is primed to take over should that happen. So back to this application. Sarah, anything you want to update the committee on from what you've heard?
Only just to confirm the distance between the two buildings. So it would be, I think I measured off the plan, it was about 1.3 and so that would be enough for the new footpath access to number 27 and for rear access for 28. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll move on to the questions from the committee to Sarah. We're starting on page 138 and let's just start with the principle of development. So this is outside the village boundary, but only because there was a neighbourhood plan and that is near to completion, is that correct? And then the South Downs will accept this as being part of the, part of Twyford that could be built on, is that, have I got that right?
Yes, that's correct, Chair. It was always within the settlement boundary of Twyford prior to the adoption of the local plan for the South Downs and now just in this period where the neighbourhood plan isn't made yet, but it is proposed in there. So although there's no official boundary set at this moment, then it will be when the plan is made.
Yeah, so it has been designated to be part of the village boundary in the South National Park, yeah, so moving to... So any other questions on principle of development?
I have a question on the Appeal Inspector's Report, Chair, from the previous application.
Yeah, okay.
Is that a principle of, yeah, thank you. So on page six of our update sheets, the third paragraph down, "The proposed dwelling would as such appear in Congress within the street scene and the adverse effect would be amplified by the prominent positioning of the dwelling at the beginning of the sequence around the green." I'm rather of the opinion that this particularly, but a lot of the rest of the comments in the inspector's report still apply to this application. So I'd be very grateful if you could just tell us why you think they don't. Thank you.
Yes, so with the previous application that was for a detached dwelling in the garden, so with number 28 remaining and then the detached dwelling next to it, that was of a much more contemporary design to this application. So I think the reason why, I think there's two parts to it with the appeal decision. I think one is the fact that it was introducing new built form next to the existing properties, which felt that it was a cramped form of development. So by removing, by replacing the dwelling instead of adding an additional one, then we felt that it's not a cramped form of development that we could object to this time. And then with the design, because this has been designed to be a lot more reflective of the existing properties along the east side of Churchfields in that it's linear in form and it's a more simple, it has got the front gable, but it's just, it was considered acceptable just to add a bit of interest to the building. It wasn't considered harmful. So it was our view that it wouldn't be in Congress. So that's why we felt that it was, that's why I feel the appeal decision is different to our current recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
So should we widen the questions on to citing scale and design? Which is page 138, 139? No questions?
No further questions, Chair.
So page 140, we've got landscape character of the South Downs National Park, dark night skies and highways.
No further questions, Chair.
Then on page 141, we've got trees and ecosystem services and local residential amenity and let's just go on to drainage and sustainable construction.
No questions indicated, Chair.
So we're into debate. And I will start as no one's rushing in. Originally councillor Rutter also picked up the bit about design, that this is not like the other buildings. It's on the cusp really as you go around the corner. So the first two buildings, as you go into Churchfields, are really modern and we saw one of them, which is owned by the applicant. And then they go into somewhat of a dated pairing all the way around the crescent. And so what this is proposing is to leave one pairing perhaps, it depends what the owner of 27 wants to do, and then to make 28 look a little bit more present day. And I think the applicant has made a very good effort to address the inspector's comments. It is much smaller, it's got much less glazing, he's taken the balcony away, so the front and the west have fewer windows, the garage has been taken away and the blank wall was bothering me, but it doesn't bother me quite so much enough because really at 1.3, I think Sarah said, or whatever, you're not going to see it, you're not going to have a view of that. And so it's a sort of design which is halfway between the traditional Churchfields and the two modern properties as you go in. And I think actually it will be quite successful. So I am going to vote to approve this application. Any further contributions to debate?
We have councillor Laming and then myself and then councillor Reed, Chair.
Councillor Laming?
Thank you, Chair. I look at this with some trepidation. I think that it is the first house as you come into that part of the area and I think that the design is such that it will change the environment and the look of the area. I also think that we're coming into the area still of overdevelopment on that very small plot and I don't think all the things have been addressed that was in the original rejection of the appeal. So I cannot support this at all, sorry.
Councillor Rutter?
Thank you, Chair. I started out with that view councillor Laming, but actually I've listened to the officer's contribution and indeed Mr Powder's contribution. And I do feel, I know we have to be especially careful in the South Downs National Park not to change things unduly, but we're replacing a three-bedroom semi with a three-bedroom detached house. I think I'd be much happier if both houses were being demolished and rebuilt. I do feel quite sorry for the gentleman at 27 because he's got a lot of work still to do in his house and, you know, it would be a lot better if, and all these concrete faced houses of a particular age, and there are quite a few in this close, some of which have had their concrete walls replaced and some of which haven't. I understand, you know, that they are impossible to get mortgages on and things, which makes them very affordable, but also might mean that they're about to fall down as well. So I do think that it has to be replaced. Whether this is the right way to do it is debatable. Our officers have worked hard to come up with a solution which in design terms is much closer to the original and so not as incongruous as the previous application or indeed the previous proposed detached house on this site. So whilst I have my doubts and I have my reservations, I will be supporting the officer's recommendation. Thank you. Chair, so we have councillor, where are we?
Reed?
Councillor Reed, councillor Clear, councillor Raffel and councillor McLean. Thank you.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you, Chairman. Looking at the plans, it is basically fractionally larger than the original property that is being removed. I did get concerned when, I think it was councillor Cook, indicated the reduction in the amenity space. I don't think that's necessarily the case, looking at the original plan and now the amended plan, because that removal of the garage area has added to the amenity element to it. What did surprise me is the fact that in the report, there were several mentions of traffic issues within the area, but they don't appear to have come to this meeting. I too am sympathetic with number 27 and hope it all goes well. And I would go along with the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Clear?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I feel the applicant has really tried to improve and revise the plans, which is obviously a great step and obviously in the right direction. To my mind, it looks much better than the previous application, so I support this and yes, I will vote to approve this recommendation, this plan.
Thank you. Councillor Raffel?
Thank you, Chair. This, I think, will improve the site completely. It'd be nice to get rid of the concrete strips of those buildings. We've had several in Ossbury that have been bricked up and this would be good. So the owner convinced me that he's going to look after number 27 to make sure that is looked after properly, so I shall be supporting it.
Thank you. Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Chair. I struggled with this one a little bit. There was one comment made towards the end of Mr Powder's presentation. I can't remember who asked the question, was about liability insurance if further damage was created to the property next door. And I don't know, is it reasonable, I don't know if it's planning, but it's probably decent, is it reasonable to impose a condition that a fair and equitable insurance policy is taken out by the developer to protect the house number 27 from damage that may be inflicted during the build, which is a very strange bill to me. I know it has to be done, but I'm just a little bit worried about that resident who we've heard nothing from. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, who shall I ask? Shall I ask Fiona, our law expert?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I can deal with that. I mean, that isn't a planning matter and it wouldn't be reasonable to impose a condition to require that the applicant take out insurance on that. So it's...
I do understand that Fiona, I'm just worried about the decency of doing things and there's good ways of doing things and bad. And I'd like to see someone with a house falling down and there is and the developer, sadly, would say, I'm sorry.
As I said, it's not within the remit of the planning system. Thank you.
Yeah. And Mr Powder did say he wanted to live there, so, you know, he has to live with a neighbour and presumably he doesn't want the neighbour not to be there because the wall's...
I think he said he lives in the close, he's not going to live in the developed house.
Understandable, but we have to be guided by our law expert here. Vice Chair, do we have any more contributions to debate we're in, aren't we?
No more contributions to debate, Chair.
So this application has been recommended to be permitted for approval, subject to conditions, page 142 to 149 and the informative's on page 147. I have a feeling they go on longer than that, but the informative which starts on page 147. And I will now pass over to Dave to do the roll call to see how councillors will vote, whether they vote, were voting for approval or not.
Yes, certainly, Chair. Councillor Clear?
Four.
Councillor Evans?
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith?
Four.
Councillor Laming?
Against.
Councillor McLean?
Likewise against, sadly.
Councillor Reed?
Four.
Councillor Raffel?
Four.
And councillor Rutter?
Four.
So that's six members, four and two against, Chair.
So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. And then we're just wait for, do you want a break or are you happy to go on to the last application? I don't anticipate it taking too long.
Let's keep going, Chair.
Carry on, Chair.
Chair, I shall be leaving you now.
Okay, yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, councillor Raffel. Are you going or are you saying?
I think he's going.
Sorry, no, I shall sit and watch.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mrs Lumby.
Hi there, hello, hello. Good afternoon, everybody.
We're going to have a presentation first, I think, from Mr Girdler and so if you could just turn your camera off and your mic and then we'll come through you as a public speaker.
Chair, we're just getting Mr Girdler in the room now, will just be a moment.
And then you can unmask.
Yep.
Now I'm out of your way. I'll just get my presentation up.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr Gerdler, thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairman, good afternoon councillors.
Good afternoon. Now, Mr Lumby, this, this is a sort of an unusual, it's not a TPO application. It's because the application comes from a councillor, councillor Lumby. And the recommendation is no objection is raised to the application for the reasons that set up in paragraph 10. Now, there are a lot of trees, I don't know how you're going to deal with it. You're going to, do you need to deal with the trees one by one or?
I, I, what I've done, I've done the significant parts to the application, but I've done some sort of shots of the garden, otherwise there would be an awful lot of images and photographs in a long time. So I've done the sort of what the major works are. And, you know, and I'll explain as we go through the process of what the thinking and what's behind it.
And all these trees need plumbing permission, do they?
It's because they are in the conservation area. The, the, the applicant has to apply to local plan authority to the works first.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, yeah, this is the site here. And if I can just get the mouse working somewhere. Whatever it is.
Turn on, underneath I think, oh, there it is.
Oh, yeah, I got it, yeah, there we go. Now, this, this is the back garden, the manor house is up here, Apple Tree Cottage. So there's a line of houses along the road. This is the High Street of Minstoke here. So all the trees are screened from public view by the dwellings. This is a barn, there's another dwelling, and over here is the river and way over here is the A32. So none of the trees are actually in, you can hardly see any of the trees. The only ones you can see from the road is this group here, but you've got to look down a long track to see them. So there, you know, all the trees, I say, are tucked away from public view. So, you know, we would better put tree preservation order on anyway because there's no low public amenity to them. And as you know, part of the TPO is they had to have public views. So if you go to the next slide, please, thank you. Now, this, this, this is the first one, the sub major tree. As you can see, the low branches on the roof of the building, the barn. So they're, they're asking to just take the branches up off the building so it doesn't damage the building, which is, is good arboriculture practice. And the tree would take that easy anyway, so that's not a problem. The next one, please. This one here is, is down to fail. Again, you've got the barn over here to the side. Again, you can see the manor house behind there, you know, it's the road to the other side. But this has got quite a nasty, what we call a clued fault that snapped away years ago in the reaction wood. So that's in danger of falling apart and will fall this way. It's loaded to go over the barn, so that needs taking down before it falls down. The next one, T3, this apple is destined to be ground, failed to ground level. As you can see, it's a poor specimen and it's not worthy of a TPO. Next one. And these are to the south of the property. So a manor, a manor house is over here, the main, the main high street is over here, the A32 is over there. So we're looking south and these are some apple trees that need the reduction down for two metres to try and bring them back into some sort of shape. They're in a hedge line, there's a hedge, you just seen a minute along, so they're on the southern boundary of the property. Next one, please. Thank you. This is moving down, again, the manor house is over this side of the road, A32 over there. Small, they want to build a new, make a new orchard in this area. So it proposed to take this small birch tree out and replant this area as an orchid. This tree behind is destined for a bit of crown lifting, just to take it up so they can walk around the garden. And again, you won't see any of this work from a public point of view. Next one. This, these, both of these trees are down to come out. You can see you've got a massive bacterial canker scar here. This, this tree won't get any better, it's just going to fall apart. This is an ash here that's been affected by the ash dieback, got a lot of dead wood in it. And again, neither of these trees would qualify for tree preservation order. A, because of their condition, but because there is no public amenity to them. Again, this is a dead tree, dead hawthorn. This is the river behind and this is the A32 right over here. So, so it's miles away from any sort of public amenity. Next one, please. Now, this is standing back to the garden, this is the tree to be felled. You can see Apple Tree Cottage there, manor house would be over here, the road over there. So over this side would be the A32, this is generally view across the garden. There's a small apple, there's a betcher that'll come out, there's a tree for crown lifting. So as you can see, it's a fairly enclosed garden. Next one, please. And again, this is looking sort of southwest down, A32 over here. Here's the cherry here and the ash to come out. Some crown lifting on this one, a small amount on that one. So again, next one, please. This is up behind the barn, these are two derrick beaches. This is a crown lifting these trees up just to take, so the owner can use the garden. And as I say, the barn runs along here, there is, there's another derrick beach on this side and there is a low branch very close to the roof space of the barn. So that needs sorting out before that does damage to the barn. Next one, please. This is now, this is the track that runs down the back of the barn, this is the barn here, this is the garden. The, the garden floor is over the other side here, over the back here. There's just some low branches need taking off to, to raise the, the crown of the trees over the, the trackway. And there's one over the garden of the neighbouring property needs taken up. Again, it's minor works, it, you can see, this is taken up, so you can see from the High Street down. But again, it's minor works, not going to have any effect on the group itself. Next one, please. And this is back in the back garden, over here was the apple trees that were used on the southern side. This is a hedge that's got out of cyclic pruning. Basically is to, you know, bring it back into some sort of, you know, prune. It's not covered by the conservation area, but it is part of the work. So it's worth mentioning that, you know, the owner wants to make this, you know, better again. Then my last sort of slide is to say that raise no objection, my recommendation is to raise no objection for it. And the reason is that the work is minor works that will not have a detriment back on the health of the trees or the setting of the conservation area. That's purely because of whether you can't see them. Now ends my presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ivan. Now, Mrs Lumby, if you'd like to put your camera and your mic back on.
Turn your camera and mic off.
Yes.
You're down as a public speaker, but do I understand that you just want to answer questions? Or do you want to say something to us?
No, 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 I think he covered that very well, thank you, thank you very much for that. So no, really just here, just to see if anyone's got any questions or queries about our, our plans here, yeah, that's all, thank you.
Yeah. And so did I hear from Mr Gerdler that you're going to be planting more trees?
Yes, the idea is that, yeah, to plant apple trees in there, quite a few apple trees and then also a vegetable, a larger kind of vegetable patch area as well.
Lovely, you've got some lovely trees in your garden. Vice Chair, any questions for Mrs Lumby?
None indicated, Chair, thank you. I think Mr Gerdler's presentation was very comprehensive.
Yes, it was, yes. So thank you very much indeed for coming along, Mrs Lumby. Do stay with us, but if you could just take your microphone and your camera off again, thank you.
Thank you.
And Ivan, I just wanted to check, under T9, which is the two apple trees.
Yes.
You asked for planning permission to take down Ivy, do you?
No, you don't need to, no, you can do that without permission. And that's the group in the hedge line, that's it there, yes.
The reason, I see, yes, it's quite invasive, isn't it? But Ivy actually harm trees or does it?
Well, it doesn't harm a tree, what does it? It loads weight to the tree on the top, it's like strings between, and when the wind blows, it causes, it will cause, you know, a heavy, and the tree will curve because of the weight, the wind pushes it. But also it will eventually smother the tree. So, you know, it's, it's, it's good to try and keep it down. But then you've got to be careful with it because of things like bats, you know. So you've got to be, you've got to strike a balance of the tree and the, the wildlife.
And that's the same with that hedge that you showed us, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
That's right at the end, H.
At the end, yeah.
Yeah, very end, yes.
Sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, you see, see the hedge is completely infested with bramble. You know, the applicant can't really do anything with that other than pull the bramble out and try and prune it to make a sort of, you know, and that will preserve, you know, that will keep the hedge going. It will, you know, stop the bramble from killing the hedge because it smother out. But, you know, the leaves get smothered out. So, you know, that, that will preserve for years to come. Although it's not covered by the TPO, TPC application, but I thought I'd put it in there just to, you know, to sort of make you aware that's extra works.
Thank you. Vice Chair, any more questions for Ivan?
No further questions, Chair.
So thank you. So the recommendation, which we have on page 184, or actually you had it on your screen, Ivan, if it's the next.
That's okay.
There we are. Recommendation is that we raise no objection because the proposal has just reasonable minor tree works and won't have a detrimental impact on the health of the trees or setting of the conservation area. So that's the proposal from Ivan. And I suppose the, you are either for that recommendation or against. And I'll ask Dave to take the roll call through the committee.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Councillor Clear.
Oh, four, I bow to the expert, Ivan, four.
Councillor Evans.
Four.
Councillor Gordon Smith.
Four.
Councillor Leaming.
Four.
Councillor McLean.
Four.
Councillor Reed.
Four.
And councillor Rutter.
Four.
So that's all seven members are in favour, Chair.
Thank you. So that, that recommendation is approved. And that brings us to the end of the committee, thank you very much.